Community Development, full of hearings today. It's February 8th, 2024. The time is 10:00 a.m. I'm calling this meeting to order. In attendance are Commissioners Brooks, Matarri, and Duncan. I don't have my full list of opening remarks because it doesn't appear that this crowd will get too unruly. So, just a reminder, we're just going to be respectful. And changes the agenda. Okay? Hearing none. Polling for conflicts of interest? No?
None.
Okay. So, I don't have any conflicts, but I live next door to Old 95 Business Park. And I am well acquainted with the condens, and I consider them friends and supporters, but that will not have a problem with my decision today. And I believe that we are going to hold off decisions for a date certain. And Jennifer, you would look for that next date.
For us too.
Thank you. We'll do that. So, this board has typically wanted to deliberate apart from the hearings, so we have more time to digest all the information presented. So, with that, we will start our public hearing number one, Z O N two three dash zero 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 three, Old 95 Business Park. Vlad?
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Vlad Finkel with Cootney County Community Development. I realize that the agenda is full this morning, so I'll try to be as brief as possible on each of the three zone change public hearings that we have this morning. This is a request by the Old 95 Business Park LLC to rezone a 5.81 acre parcel of land from rural to light industrial with a conditional zoning development agreement. The subject property is located on the north side of Cootney County, west of Highway 95 and just north of Garwood Road. The property is fairly flat. It has some vegetation. There is an existing residence and outbuildings on the property. The, as I stated, the current zoning is rural. However, as you can see on the aerial zoning map, there are parcels in the area that are zoned light industrial as well as light industrial with a conditional zoning development agreement.
Vlad, excuse me for just a second. Pat, is it appropriate for me to show where my house is? Or, doesn't really matter because I've disclosed I'm a neighbor. I don't mind.
You can.
This is me. So, I've already approved this, and so here we are hearing this.
Continue.
Chair Duncan, for the public, showed that her property is to the, directly to the northwest of the subject site. The comprehensive plan for the subject property is suburban. These are some of the photos of the property in question. As I said, it has an existing residence and outbuildings on the site, and that is one of the reasons why the applicant is requesting a conditional zoning development agreement. Currently, the light industrial zone does not allow residential structures on site. What we have done in the past, specifically on a parcel directly to the south, is we have allowed the applicants to pursue a zone change to more intense zoning classification with a conditional development, conditional zoning development agreement that has a caveat stating that the existing residence shall remain on site until such time that a light industrial use is established, at which time the applicant will be responsible for either A, removing the residence, or B, converting that to be part of the light industrial use, such as an office. So, that is specifically why a conditional zoning development agreement has been prepared, and should the board approve it, will be recorded along with the, with a zone change ordinance, and will be in place in our system to have the structure be removed or converted once a light industrial use is established. I already spoke about the sideboards of the CZDA. During the public agency comment, none of the agencies had any issues with the proposed rezone. There, of course, will be requirements with a light industrial design standards once that use is established. During the public comment period, which we had two, we had one for the hearing examiner as well as for today's hearing, there were only two comments in support of this application. Staff finds that the proposed rezone will be consistent with the comprehensive plan designation of suburban, which allows for non-residential uses to be developed in the area, and therefore, we believe that this will be consistent with the existing uses as well as zoning classifications in the immediate area. The hearing examiner heard this request on December 7th of 2023 and subsequently recommended approval. I stand for any questions that you have at this time.
Questions for Vlad?
No, thank you.
Okay. The CZDA, does it include the racetrack language as well from the other? I thought I saw that in there, but I wasn't sure if it was.
I don't remember off the top of my head, but that may be a question for, we have the applicant's representative here, maybe they could clarify. And if it's not in there, you could, of course, request that it be included as part of a, as a part of a CZDA in your motion.
I have it right here, so I'm, I thought when I briefly read through it that it was in there. Yeah. Section D would be where it's at in the agreement, so.
And is this something that the board wants to make emphasis on and require that?
Well, it's already in the agreement. It's in the draft agreement already, section D.
Understood.
Yeah. Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure, because I thought I saw that, but for the record. All right, so I guess we will start with the applicant's representative, so Mr. Marshall.
Are you going to just move my slides? We can tell some jokes here or something like that. But Rand on the spot over there, he's always good. Come on.
Not when I'm on the spot.
Rand and I have known each other since we got out of college. Too long, I guess, huh?
Started working here together.
I had brown hair then.
Leslie, the next deliberations is February 22nd at 10:00.
Okay. And do we have a big agenda for that one yet?
We have two deliberations, one discussion, and one request for a public hearing.
Okay. And then three more deliberations?
But then we don't have a meeting scheduled with this in March at all, because they need to do this one, so we'd have to do a special date in March if we do.
I think two hours will probably be fine to get all that done.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. For sure.
That's fine. Thank you, Jonathan.
What do we do without IT people? Thank God.
Just go to the browser window. It should already be there. Should be sharing.
I'm just trying to do full screen here. Yeah, it's in the PDF. But I think you can just scroll through the PDF. I mean, it's.
Yeah, yeah, I can scroll. I've got a PDF of the zone change, or the PowerPoint.
Okay. We're screen sharing in Zoom now, so we should be able, should be good to go.
Can I try advancing the PowerPoint? I can't.
Right, that's the PDF still. But, I mean, I think scrolling through the PDF is probably going to be fine.
Yeah. And Vlad, you can just scroll.
Advance when he needs you to.
It's not working. That's a PDF I sent you, but I actually have a copy of the PowerPoint file.
Is the PowerPoint loaded in there?
Yeah. I just sent you a PDF of the PowerPoint, but I got it on the thumb drive right here, if you want to load it. But you can just scroll this thing.
Yeah, just scroll the PDF.
Can we do a test and see if we can get to the next one? Here we go. We're off. We'll be quick today. Again, uh... Do we go to the first slide? Here we go. A little housekeeping. Good morning, I'm Brad Marshall, partner in J E B Engineers for the address at 7825 Metal Arc Way, representing Lance and the Old 95 Business Park, request for a light industrial zoning from underlying rural zoning. I want to thank the Commissioners for your time, your commitment to our community, and being here today, as well as the staff. Had the opportunity to work with staff, and particularly Vlad, for years, and I think we're all lucky to have Vlad on board. Move to the next slide. We've reviewed these, obviously, the staff report as well as the hearing examiner's report. Both the staff and the hearing examiner, who's actually a land use attorney as well, have recommended approval. We've reviewed the agency comment as well as the public comment. Agencies are favorable to the request, and there's really no opposition to the request at this point in time as well. There we go. Again, I think we're, particularly Commissioner Duncan, are familiar with the property. On Highway 95, it fronts Old 95, which is just a few years ago, was actually our state highway, you know, in the Garwood area. We can probably go to the next slide. There you go. You kind of zoom in on that. Again, our client, Old 95, actually owns the property adjacent and around. It was previously rezoned under a conditional zoning development agreement. So, this is fundamentally an infill acquisition and rezoning of the property. And right off the get-go, the goal is to redevelop the property into a light industrial use that would primarily be a fairly dry use, fundamentally, storage units, and storage units that would accommodate some business aspects, some restroom facilities. Keep in mind that it is over the aquifer, so they can only produce the same amount of affluent as a single-family home would on five acres as well. So, the restroom is really just for limited employment, and that's about it. So, it's a storage facility that would house, obviously, you know, basic storage, but also small industry and business, tradesmen, as well, you know, electricians, plumbers who need an office and so forth. So, I think ultimately redevelopment is a pretty quiet use in a neighborhood because it's contained within buildings, and it's a light industrial request. As Vlad, we can go back to that same slide. As Vlad mentioned, there is an existing home in the property, and, you know, when it was built 40, 50 years ago, it was probably appropriate at that time. But as days have gone by, there's significant traffic on Highway 95, Old 95. There's a major rail line there that produces a fair amount of noise, both rail and traffic, traffic noise. And so, there's a higher, better use of this property. As you look at the adjacent land use, there's a pole yard to the north. To be frank, there's an old wrecking yard to the east across the highway, which is pretty significant, and some other light industrial uses farther to the south, and rural residential uses on the five-acre lots to the west, excuse me, and a major commercial zone farther to the south as well. So, you kind of see it's an infill zoning, rectifying, kind of, one might think, I wouldn't say an error, but it's something that needs to be kind of corrected. Moving forward, next slide. We do believe the zone change meets the requirements for approval, as indicated in the staff report and hearing examiner's recommendation approval. I could walk right through each one of these, 701 to 706 and more, and elaborate and touch on those, but if you look at the adjacent land use, it's compatible. You look at the adjacent zoning, it's compatible. You look at the future use of this property, it's compatible. That is exactly why the staff, the hearing examiner, the agencies, and the public support this request. So, with that in mind, we respectfully request approval with the conditional zoning development agreement that speaks of basically taking that house and, you know, demoing the house prior to redevelopment of the property, or at least converting that house to likely a temporary office space, and then over time, that house will probably be removed. And as Commissioner Duncan mentioned, there is a provision in there that speaks of no raceways. We're well aware of that. I wrote that agreement, and it's mirrored off the prior one. It's on the adjacent property, and we stand behind that. With that respect, we stand for questions.
Okay, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. All right. I will call for anyone who is, who wants to speak in favor of this project or against this project. All right, nobody's rushing the microphone. How about on Zoom? Anyone on Zoom want to testify in favor or against the Old 95 Business Park? Okay.
Stephanie, are you here for a different case on Zoom? Apparently so.
Okay. So, at this time, we can enter into deliberations, or we can end public testimony and put deliberations at February 22nd at 10:00 a.m.
I move that we end the public hearing and enter into deliberations on February 22nd at 10:00 a.m.
I second the motion.
For Z O N two three dash zero 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 three, Old 95 Business Park.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. Aye. All right, item two, the only one I don't have a connection to, Z O N twenty-three dash zero 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 five, is it Penny or Piney?
Penny.
Penny. Perfect, thank you. All right.
Once again, for the record, Vlad Finkel with Cootney County Community Development, this is a... Once again, for the record, Vlad Finkel with Cootney County Community Development, this is a request by Mr. and Mrs. Penny to rezone a five-acre parcel of land from agriculture to light industrial zone. The subject property is located close to Washington, Idaho State Line. It's directly off of Beck Road. As you can see on the aerial photo, the property is adjacent to some more intense uses. You have an existing restricted surface mining pit as well as to the north, and then you have another light industrially zoned parcel of land to the, directly to the north of the subject property, which has been used for last decade or so as an auction yard. The property is fairly flat. As you can see on the aerial, there was an existing residence there, which has since been removed. There are a number of vehicles that, some of which have been removed, and some are on the property. In discussion with Mr. Penny, he advised me that he, when he purchased the property and it was under contract, he has agreed verbally with the previous owner that he would allow him to keep those vehicles until his rezone is approved, and he's moving forward to establish his light industrial use, which I assume, once the board approves this, that the property will be cleared, and then his intent is to establish a light industrial use. He's currently operating a small-scale trucking business to provide material and equipment for, for mining operations in the area. As I said, the property is zoned agriculture. The parcels to the west, northwest, and north are zoned mining. You also have mining with a light, with a conditional zoning development agreement to the east, and the parcel, a large parcel that abuts the property to the south and east is zoned agriculture. I don't believe that parcel is used for agricultural purposes at this time. However, the applicant can further address that if that comes up as a question by the board. The current comp plan designation is transitional. The property is located within the area of city impact. It is not in the exclusive tier. It is in the shared tier of cities of Rathrum, Post Falls, as well as Hayden. According to Cootney County Land Use and Development Code, Article 10.7, the county is required to notify the three jurisdictions of the proposed rezone or development and give them 30 days to respond. There is no further obligation in terms of, in terms of future development as you would have in the exclusive tier. These are some of the photos of the property in question. There's very limited vegetation along the Beck Road right-of-way, wherever a majority of property is just grassland. During the agency comment period, we solicited comments from agencies with jurisdiction. Everyone seems to be on board. Really, there are no issues with the proposed rezone. I do want to point out that Health Department does have a strict wastewater discharge sideboards over the aquifer, so the future use will have to be, the future of land discharge from a light industrial use will have to be consistent with a residential use on the property, which is 250 gallons per day of wastewater, and it has to be domestic. They can't have any non-domestic wastewater discharge on site. During the agency, excuse me, during the public comment period for the hearing examiner as well as the board, we only received two comments in support of this application, so this is very, this is not controversial at all. As I said before, they're looking to relocate their business from Washington State to Idaho. The proposal, we find that the proposed rezone to light industrial is consistent with the transitional zoning designation goals and policies, as well as with the existing zoning and uses in the area, which are predominantly more intense than agricultural. This is a trend that the county has seen over the course of last decade or so. A majority of the parcels along the Beck Road corridor have been rezoned from agriculture to either mining or light industrial use, and this is one of very few remaining parcels over the prairie in that location that are still zoned agriculture. The hearing examiner heard this request on December 21st of 2023 and subsequently recommended approval. I stand for any questions that you have.
No questions, thank you.
All right. So, is there a representative for this case? Okay?
Hi, Brad Penny, 4321 North Barker Road, currently is where we're located at. Excuse me if I don't follow proper procedure or anything. This is the first time, the only time I've ever done anything like this. Yes, we're looking to move our trucking business from Barker Road in Spokane, Washington, to Beck Road. The traffic impacts will be minimal, as we currently already supply our trucking to Triple-Age Concrete, Santa Gravel, Shamrock, Coeur d'Alene paving, Vista Materials, Spokane Rock Products, Interstate Santa Gravel. So, we're already in the area. We have three people in our office, two mechanics, so the impacts on the, for the sewage, wastewater, and everything will be minimal, comparatively speaking, to a residential house. Our drivers show up in the morning, leave during the day, and then come back at night. We are good stewards of the land. We've had no issues with Spokane County or anything since we've been in our current facility since 2006. Basically, it would almost mirror what is Rhineland Equipment Auctions area that you see currently, same kind of similar shop design. It's just for maintenance, light maintenance. We don't do any heavy maintenance or anything, anything like transmission, energy, engine rebuilds, et cetera, et cetera. We farm out to the dealerships to take care of it. So, it's pretty much, we would gravel the parking lot, gravel the area, put up a shop for maintenance and office, and maintain, light maintain our trucks there and park them there. They leave during the day, come back at night. Like I said, we're already there. I believe currently that Post Falls Highway District is also going to improve the road, so it's a year-round truck road because of all the mining situations that are there. And, yeah, we would improve the, improve the site, support the businesses that are currently here, since we're already currently here. Probably even increase our support for those businesses that are here, and, yeah.
All right. Any questions?
I'm just curious, this is really more just economics. You're closer to the source, so it just makes it a lot easier for you.
Definitely. Originally, on Barker Road, when I started business in 1996, Central Premix Sullivan Road Plant was the plant for your materials. They had a wide variety of materials, easy access. That pit is drying up, so we are traveling more and more to other pits in the areas, plus pricing and everything. The pricing over here is much, much better for Santa Gravel pickups and all that kind of stuff for our customer base. So, we've been hauling, you know, more exclusively out of J Mac, Interstate there on Pleasant View, et cetera, et cetera. So, yes, we would be closer to the sources. As the city of Spokane has grown, the gravel pits are getting farther and farther apart. So, yes, this puts us more into an area where there are more readily available sources closer and easier to get to.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody here in favor or against this project who would like to speak? Okay, anybody on Zoom? All right. Then I would take a motion to end public testimony and our deliberation set date.
I move that we end public testimony for Z O N two three dash zero zero zero
I move that we end public testimony for Z O N two-three dash zero 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 five Penny and enter into deliberations on February twenty-second at ten a.m.
I have no questions either. And I second the motion.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Matory.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. All right. Item three, Z O N twenty-two dash zero 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 six, Condon Hutter. And Vlad again?
Thank you. Once again, and for the last time today, Vlad Finkel with Cooney County Community Development. This is a request, case number zero and twenty-two zero 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 six by Gala and John Condon Living Trust. The applicants are requesting a rezone of a two-point-nine-seven acre parcel of land from commercial with a conditional zoning development agreement to commercial. The subject property is located on the north side of I ninety and east of Hutter Road. As you can see, based on the zoning and aerial overlay map, the property is adjacent to the city of Coeur d'Alene city limits to the east and to the north. You have commercial zoning directly west of Hutter Road right-of-way, as well as agricultural suburban to the northwest. And then, of course, across I ninety to the south, you have commercial zoning designation. As you may know, this, the property that is directly to the north of Mr. Condon's site is the Courteur property that was recently annexed into the city limits of Coeur d'Alene. I believe that took place in spring of two thousand twenty-three. There is an intent to develop that site, to have residential mixed-use and commercial development. There's, I believe, there's close to four hundred plus or minus acres in that area. Don't quote me on that specific acreage, but that will be developed to an urban density. The comp plan for the subject property is border, and you have some transitionally further north, northwest, and all of the development to the east and to the north is, has been annexed into the city of Coeur d'Alene, as I already stated. The subject property is within the city of Coeur d'Alene area of city impact. The properties that are to the west of Hutter Road are all within the city of Post Falls area of city impact. I want to make emphasis on that because, as you have read through the record, the applicant had made, it's not an argument, but their position is that the current request is similar to the one that was recently approved directly west of Hutter Road right-of-way, where the applicant was able to negotiate with the city of Post Falls. The development of the subject property and having it been rezoned from, from commercial with a zoning development agreement strict, straight to commercial. But clearly, the development of this property had to comply with the city of Post Falls ACI standards, and the applicant was required to enter into what's called an annex consent to annex agreement with the city of Post Falls. And they had a list of, a bullet list of items that the applicant had to agree to in terms of improvements along the right-of-way, landscaping, site development, so forth. Whereas in this case, none of that would apply because the property is not within that ACI, it's within the Coeur d'Alene ACI. The property is located over the Rathrum Prairie Aquifer. Therefore, it is bound to the Panhandle Health, strict limitations of wastewater discharge, which are consistent with one, with two hundred fifty gallons per day wastewater discharge over five acres, which in this case, the property is only three acres. They're grandfathered in because it was created prior to those rules and regulations being established by said agency. The applicant currently has a conditional zoning development agreement, which was approved and recorded along with a zone change that took place in two thousand fourteen. It's important to understand the history of this property to have a better idea of why the applicant is before you today. In two thousand fourteen, the applicant came forward with a request to rezone their property from agricultural suburban to commercial with a zoning development agreement, which would enable them to run a small operation onsite, small light industrial operation or commercial operation onsite, where they assemble, disassemble docks, and they store material for the construction of those docks. That has been in operation for almost a decade. We were informed by the applicant's representative, Mr. Wickman, that as of the spring of two thousand twenty-three, the applicant sold the business. They have cleared the site. If you drive I nine ninety, there's clearly no equipment and no storage of materials as could have been previously seen off of I ninety. So that business is no longer onsite. But they have decided to keep the property and, and reutilize it as a, as a rental site for another business. They have actively advertised it for another business that they hope would have been to the same intensity as this use. They have brought forward at least one similar proposal to what was there before. I think they wanted to have a taxi business. However, in review of that proposal, we determined that it would be more intense than what was previously there. And therefore, we declined to approve it. We said you would have to go through either a zone development agreement modification process or pursue what they have today if it is approved by the board, which would be elimination of the zoning development agreement. These are some of the photos of the property in question. As you can see, there is a residence and there is a house. There are additional, there's a, like a three-sided shed here where Mr. Condon stored a lot of his equipment. And materials on the property, as you can see, there's significant vegetation along I ninety, although those trees are not close enough to obscure the site. There is, you know, the site is clearly visible. They do have a fence, but it's highly visible from I ninety. During the agency comment period, we solicited comments from various agencies. No one really had an issue with the exception of City of Coeur d'Alene. I'd like to kind of go back to what we advised the applicant at a pre-application meeting, as well as when they submitted the application. We did raise a concern that the proposed elimination of the zoning development agreement would, could potentially intensify the use of the site, even though it's bound to the Panhandle Health District wastewater discharge limitations. Furthermore, we believed that the city of Coeur d'Alene would have the same position on the elimination of the CZDA and that the site should not be further intensified unless it is annexed into the city limits of City of Coeur d'Alene and provided municipal services such as water and sewer. We made that very clear to the applicant from day one. However, they, with our understanding, decided to move forward with the application. During the public comment period for the hearing examiner, as well as tonight's hearing, there were really no interest from the public, no comments. Staff thought this through and, and have, has a list of concerns here that we also addressed in the staff analysis of our report to the hearing examiner, as well as the board. We find that the proposed, or that due to unknown future use of the site, if the zoning development agreement is eliminated, that it may not be compatible with the adjacent residential uses in the area. We find that the zoning development agreement, along with a special notice permit, which is required for all commercial uses that abut a state or federal highway, is not sufficient, will not sufficiently address, or is not a sufficient safeguard for future mitigation of impacts associated with a commercial operation on the property. We find that the conditions since the original rezone in two thousand fourteen have changed significantly with annexation of the Courteur property to warrant the property be, being incorporated into the city limits of City of Coeur d'Alene, rather than remain in the county and be rezoned to commercial and be provided only with a well and a septic system on the property. We find that the ACI agreement and the provisions in that document warrant the subject property to be annexed into the city for purposes of preserving, for purposes of protecting the underlying aquifer. And we find that the elimination of the zoning development agreement would allow for a myriad of commercial uses that could be more intense than what, than what was approved under the CZDA. Staff's recommendation to the hearing examiner and as well as the board was to have the applicant consider four different options. The first one of which is to have the existing zoning development agreement remain in its current state and have a new use be equivalent or consistent with what was out there and it would not further intensify the use of the property. The second option would be to have the zoning development agreement modified to establish a new use in the commercial zone, which would obviously have to go through a similar process as a rezone, where the applicant would change the sideboards of their zoning development agreement. It would have to go through their hearing examiner's review, as well as the board, and they would approve another limited use on site. The third one, of course, is, would be to consider rezoning the property to, to the original zoning classification of agricultural suburban until such time that it's annexed. So it has very limited development on the property and does not have the possibility of contaminating the aquifer. And the third, excuse me, and the last option would be to annex the property into the city limits of Coeur d'Alene, similar to the Courteur project directly to the north and be providing municipal services. I realize that based on communication with City of Coeur d'Alene, as well as with the applicant, that those municipal services are not directly adjacent to the site. However, that is something that would need to be addressed with the city to have those sewer and water main lines extended to the boundaries of the property. The hearing examiner heard the request on November sixteenth of two thousand twenty-three and subsequently recommended denial of their request. The hearing examiner cited very similar concerns as did the county staff and City of Coeur d'Alene. The city states that they do not want the county to remove the zoning development agreement. They don't want the property to be further intensified in use unless it, the property's annexed into the city limits. They give a similar set of options for the board to consider, where if the applicant were to find new tenants for the property, they would have a use that's similar in nature and would not further intensify the use of the property, consistent with the sideboards of the zoning development agreement. If the applicant has a potential tenant that would intensify the use of the site, that they pursue a zoning modification, the applicant consider reverting the property back to agricultural suburban zone. And the last one, of course, is to have the property annexed into the city limits of Coeur d'Alene. And their position is the same as ours. We find that, based on the criteria and findings for approval of the proposed rezone, we cannot meet the findings that the proposal is warranted or would be beneficial and compatible with the surrounding development in the area. I stand for any questions that you have at this time.
Yeah. Excuse me. I'm just kind of curious, is there a possibility that if it were annexed into the city, that they would actually not allow a commercial zoning? Or like what?
Let me try and take a stab at that. That's a decision that the staff of the city would make because an annexation agreement is like any contractual arms-length transaction. The two parties in this case, the owner and the city, have to work out an agreement as to what is suitable for annexation. So
That includes the initial zoning, you know, coming into
Thank you. That was going to be my next statement. Zoning is part of the package of the annexation agreement.
And where does conditional zoning fit into that typically?
Typically, cities wouldn't do it. They would just pick a zoning category that fits their zoning scheme, if you will. Thank you.
It is, I mean, it is possible to have a CZDA. All cities and all counties, you know, are able to do that under state law. Like David said, it isn't a real common practice with cities, at least around here.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So I do have some questions. Have cities ever denied and just said, no, we don't want to annex you?
They certainly have, and they certainly can. It's always an agreement between the
Right.
the two parties. Here, I think one, the one thing, if it's okay, I'd like to add to Vlad's presentation is, just because Vlad wouldn't know, since I've started doing planning in nineteen eighty, it's been common practice all around the country, under circumstances like this, to do what we are doing, which is recommend that the property annex, because it's just bad practice to increase intensity of use immediately adjacent to a city, because under those circumstances, once it increases the intensity, it almost certainly will never annex. Because you can't set up a situation that the city feels comfortable annexing. And so that's why we're recommending either keep it the way it is or, or the other options Vlad laid out, because it's just good planning practice, in my view.
If I may, I'd like to add one more point. There needs to be a distinction made, and perhaps Mr. Wickman, I'm sure he will address that as well. But as I stated, the property that has been used as an example across Hutter Road, one of the arguments that was made is why didn't the county force this parcel to be annexed and recommend that the zoning development agreement be eliminated? There are two main distinctions. A, said parcel of land is located in the city of Post Falls area of city impact, arguably, and I do agree, I would like to put down on record, Mr. Wickman is absolutely correct, that the restrictions of the zoning development, oh, excuse me, of the ACI agreement for the city of Post Falls exclusive tier are much more restrictive than for the city of Coeur d'Alene. That is, that's a given. Nobody's disputing that. But in that case, the subject property is not physically contiguous with the city of Post Falls city limits. Therefore, annexation is not possible. Cities do not typically, or most commonly, annex parcels that are non-contiguous with their city limits. So that, you cannot draw the same correlation with the subject property in question, because this parcel has been historically adjacent to the city of Coeur d'Alene to the east, and more recently, due to the Courteur annexation. It is contiguous to the north as well. So that is a, Mr. Wickman's position on using the property across Hutter Corridor is not really comparing apples to apples, in our view, if that's, that could be said in a more straightforward manner.
Can I just try to get some clarification here? Are you saying because it's commercial down to the south, that it's contiguous, meaning commercial up above, and that's why they agreed to that?
No, sir.
Okay. Can you say that differently?
This property to the south of I ninety is still in the county. It's not physically contiguous with the city of limits of Post Falls. Therefore, annexation is not feasible. The city will not provide, will not annex the property or provide municipal services if the subject property is not contiguous with their city limits. Physically, it's just not reasonable for them to annex the property and run a sewer and water main. Whereas in this case, the property is physically abutting. It is contiguous with the city limits of city of Coeur d'Alene. This is a zoning map. So anything that is, does not have a color is not in the county jurisdiction. We have no, no legal review on any development in this area. So that's the distinction I'd like to make, and I'm sure that Mr. Wickman could elaborate on that further.
So I, I guess I'm just a little bit puzzled. It's okay over the aquifer on the west side of Hutter, but on the east side of Hutter, it's not.
That, it's not okay in either case. It's not okay in either case. But the distinction that needs to be made is that the applicant developed, and they did have a use did have a use in mind when they went through the rezone, which they kept as was originally contemplated in the CZDA, except for they expanded the use of it, which was for a plumbing administrative business. They have three buildings on the property. They have a very comprehensive consent to annex agreement that's been filed with City of Post Falls and county that stipulates restrictive use of the site, specific landscape and requirements, specific right-of-way dedication and improvements, as well as, I believe, impact fees for future extension of water and sewer main. In this case, yes, we do have a concern over the aquifer, but the city is not willing to draft a similar request for the applicant to annex in the future. They consider, they have two options, or several options, like I said. Annex the property, revert it back to agricultural suburban zone, or modify the zoning development agreement. So I hope that I answered your question.
Yeah, you, you did. I'm sure I'll have, yes.
One other quick point is that cities actually cannot legally annex a parcel that is not contiguous to it under state law. And so there would have to be, you know, other.
A flagpole or something?
Yeah, other property owners would be willing, willing to annex before that parcel can be annexed legally. So I think Post Falls has done everything it can legally to ensure that it will be, you know, that it will be annexed and will meet city standards at, at the proper time.
And that's for land use?
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah, that is, that is correct. And, you know, with respect to the subject parcel, I, you know, honestly think the Courter annexation was probably the game changer on that. It just, you know, it is now basically surrounded by city and Hutter Road and I-90. So just two different situations, apples to oranges. And again, not necessarily trying to sway your decision one way or the other, just pointing out these, the differences.
Commissioners, one last point I forgot to mention, I think it's legally important that it be stated on the record, is once the applicant presents their case and you take public testimony, if you were to consider differing from staff's recommendation and HE recommendation, you should not be making a motion to deliberate at a certain, on date certain. Your motion would have to state that we hereby authorize the county to pursue a third public hearing notification process in order for us to make a final decision on this matter. The code states that any rezone application where the hearing examiner and the board differ in their position, the board shall have a second hearing on the matter before a decision is made.
But if we haven't deliberated, then how do we know if we're going down that direction?
True. Yeah, so I, I think, you know, deliberations to determine where you're at would be appropriate, either whether it's now or later, or it could just be made in the form of a motion and see if it passes. I mean, it can be either or.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Mr. Wickman, are you going to go first?
While Vlad gets that pulled up, I'll give you a few more things to think about, because there's not enough there yet. And so I am Rand Wickman. My address is 2992 Gotham Bay Road, Harrison, Idaho. I'm happy to be representing John and Gail Akon and Living Trust in this request. By now, we're familiar with the site. This is an alternate view, gives you a little different perspective. You can see Interstate 90 and Hutter there, southeast way across the way. And I think we're familiar with it. This is a relatively recent, within the last year, photo there. We've talked about the zoning. There's a couple, three different zones actually in the city that are nearby, and you can see those there. The interstate is shown as egg sub, but that's more of a mapping remnant than a meaningful zoning designation, because it doesn't really matter what the interstate has zoned. But you can see the commercial across the way. You can see the commercial across Hutter Road that exists. Note that this is the only property in the area that has the CZDA attached to it. A little bit of history for the site. That existing house was built in 1986. There was a zone change to commercial with the CZDA in 2014, followed by the special notice permit, which is required. That was done in 2016. All of that was done to facilitate use of the site by North Idaho Maritime. And that business sold and relocated in 2022, and currently the site's used by the owners for their other business interests while they're looking for a tenant. And so over the last year or so, we've worked with the staff to better understand the restrictions on the use that come from the current agreement. As is so often the case, these things are not as clear or explicit as you'd like them to be, so there was a fair bit of back and forth and discussion on it. But suffice it to say that, you know, basically, we're, what we're left with on this site is essentially a contractor office or contractor storage or a professional office. Commercial uses such as auto RV sales are not allowed. As Vlad mentioned, we did have a potential tenant in Coeur d'Alene Taxi as a dispatch center office that was determined not to be allowed. And so we have had quite a bit of difficulty finding a quality tenant for the site after some months of, of months and actually more than a year of effort and searching. And the, you know, this, between the CZDA and the health district limitations on septic systems, it, it really does kind of limit the, limit the use of that site to, to relatively small and contractor office storage type uses. In all my years, I have not seen a contractor storage facility that I thought presented a good look and something, that's something that I think is important with a highly visible use such as this site. And let's just kind of show that. Again, you've got the Interstate, Hutter Road. This is the site. Again, that view. And here's the view from the office. You can see that pickup truck that's on the highway, and you can see the visibility of this site from that. And similarly, from this side, that is looking more to the east there, of course. Let's explore this topic of annexation to Coeur d'Alene a little bit. We have spent some time talking to the City of Coeur d'Alene about annexation, as staff has suggested. The city seems generally supportive of the idea, but in our opinion, annexation is not as great as it might sound. Sewer will not be available to this site until the project to the north, Courter, develops, and they are starting on the north end, not on the south end. And so it is likely to be on the order of 10 years, perhaps more, before sewer is reasonably available to this site. And, you know, and that's even if the owner, if, if the condens are willing to do some extension themselves, it, you know, it's not, you know, right now, sewer seems close, painfully close. It is on the, is this, yeah, it, it exists to serve this property here, but unfortunately, there's no way to get that to this property without going through Courter. They will not grant easements, because they don't know exactly what they want to do on their property. There's no way to, there's no right-of-way that we can use. There's no way to get it out to the interstate right-of-way to bring it there. And so right now, there's just no accessibility to sewer for this property, and probably be, like I say, 10 years until it gets down into the southern third or so of this site. And so the, so that's, that's down the road sometime. And, and the City of Coeur d'Alene has said, well, yeah, you could continue the uses that are allowed, you know, under the health district's restrictions if you annexed, but, you know, that, that gets us a slightly different set of uses, but sewer will remain the inducement for future annexation, even if we have some interim use. It will go through, even if that interim use is slightly more intense than what's allowed under the current CZDA. The future use, the long-term use, will be once sewer is available, and that is our inducement to annex. But until sewer is reasonably available, all we really get from annexation to the City of Coeur d'Alene is the privilege of paying about $1,000 a year more in taxes. And that's not as exciting as, as it might, not, not as exciting to the owners as it might be to the city. One other caveat with the, with an annexation, the city's comprehensive plan has this property designated as light industrial and, or light manufacturing or manufacturing, whatever it is that they call that designation. And so the likelihood with an annexation of having a more intense use that is less compatible with the adjacent residential uses is higher in the city than it is with, with no CZDA and staying within the, staying within the county. And so those are a couple of other considerations there. I went through that. One of the other protections that the county has, and this is, you know, somewhat unique to Kootenay County, is that even if we remove the CZDA, we still have a special notice permit requirement for new uses at the site. And so the special notice permit provides the opportunity to impose conditions which could allow, or could include following city standards for street frontage and landscaping, among others. It could require, if the city wanted us to also, you know, the city would be given the opportunity to comment in that special notice permit process. They could require or ask us to sign a consent to annex agreement, like was done with that property across the street. We have no heart room with that. You know, we would annex once city sewer is reasonably available, because that takes us to the next step here. Remember, we are still, whether we're in the county or in the city, we're still significantly restricted due to the health district requirements. It's domestic strength wastewater only, 250 gallons per day maximum flow. One more thing about the prospect of amending the CZDA to, for a potential, new potential user, is we still have the special notice permit provision as well. And so, you know, we're a little over a year into this process. You can tell from our case number, it's a 2022 case number in this zone change. We've been at this a while. Amending the CZDA is probably a six to eight-month process. Then we follow that up with a special notice permit, which is another three months if things go well. Maybe there's some opportunity to overlap those two applications. I don't know of any tenant, potential tenant, who's going to hang out and wait for six months to a year for the prospect to use that site for their new business. You know, they might wait a month or two, you know, and so even the special notice permit is a burden on a potential tenant, but doing both really kind of puts us out of the water for being able to rent this to some different use, where we have to go through that dual process. And so it's just, we're in a bad situation when it comes to the, the regulatory situation that we, that we deal with. Vlad mentioned I would bring this up, and, and, and so here it is, you know, we did watch with some interest when that property was changed, the zoning was changed in that in 2019. They had commercial zone with the CZDA, just like we do. They were successful in getting it removed for the broader range of uses, like we are requesting. The differences really are pretty few. As Vlad indicated, we've got two different kinds of ACIs. Theirs actually is more restrictive than, than the Coeur d'Alene's ACI. But, you know, the primary difference was, you know, we have Coeur d'Alene that's asking for annexation, and we are contiguous to Coeur d'Alene. Post Falls was content to be neutral and, and, and accept the consent to annex and, and the stipulations that came with that. But other than that, there's not much difference between the two. I submitted the order of decision for that case into the record, for the Hutter Properties case, into the record at the hearing examiner, hearing. And in the case across the street, the staff thought the special notice permit provided adequate protections. The, the hearing examiner was good with it and recommended approval, and the Board of County Commissioners concurred with the staff and the hearing examiner and unanimously approved that. Now, I understand the board can likely find enough differences to justify a different result here, but I bring it up to explain my client's frustration with the process. It's hard to compare his situation to that one and not feel like you're on the receiving end of some kind of unequal treatment. And so that's really kind of the, the upshot of that. In, in closing, I'll just emphasize that we're asking you to allow us to broaden our search for quality interim use for the site by simply removing the CZDA. We hope to find a use that can take advantage of the high visibility of the site and something that is a little more aesthetically appealing than a contractor storage yard. We think we can do that in the city, or, excuse me, in the county without the CZDA and actually get a better use there while we're hanging out and waiting for sewer to become available, upon which time we certainly would annex, because that is certainly improves the situation for the condens. Once sewer is available, then that opens up a whole different range of potential uses for the site. With that, I'm happy to answer your questions. I appreciate your attention, and we'll look forward to your deliberations on it.
Questions?
No questions. I, I have some. So I just want to make sure I understand clearly. What you're really looking for is some intermediary situation where you can lease this land until Coeur d'Alene has built out, and then you can connect to the sewer, in which case you have every intention of being annexed into the City of Coeur d'Alene.
Absolutely. Absolutely. It, it is certainly in the, in the condens' interest to annex long-term, once sewer becomes available.
Can I ask staff a question?
Yeah.
I'm just curious, is there any way to sunset a CDZA?
That is possible. You could modify it to put in a sunset condition.
And, and do you agree with the analysis that it would take roughly 10 years for the sewer to be, the statement by the applicant?
It's hard to answer that question. Markets come and go, and it's hard to predict what the next 10 years for North Idaho will be. It, it's entirely possible that it's 10 years or even 20 years out, but I would reframe the whole, if I may, the whole perspective. It's not the county's role to try and find the highest and best use for land.
No, I understand.
It's our role to find good compatibility.
Yeah, I, I understand. It was just, just a question regarding the, the future on that. Oh, gosh, there was another question I had, and it kind of slipped my mind here.
It'll come back.
Yeah. So there would be an, an intent to be annexed by the city, or looking for some sort of a temporary. We're looking for some sort of a temporary additional use for the land that is not necessarily too much more intensive than what is set up. Is the structure on the build, on the land, is that a residence that is now an office?
Yeah, so, so this structure here was constructed as a residence, and it was converted with a change of use permit from the county to office space. So that is now office space. This is a garage, storage, storage building. And this larger building down here is a, a three-sided shed essentially that's used for storage.
And you said that the higher use in the Coeur d'Alene city long-term plan is, you said, light manufacturing, manufacturing or industrial?
Yes, they, they kind of have one comprehensive plan designation that covers the, the light industrial spectrum. And, and I think it was general manufacturing or light manufacturing. And I apologize, I didn't refresh my memory on it. But it, it is a, the, that designation. And, and I had talked to the city about that, you know, and that was, and it's, and it's unique to this property, but it was placed on that property. They redid their comprehensive plan when North Idaho Maritime was there, and it was placed to kind of accommodate that use. But that's kind of the jo, the zoning direction that the city has given for that property in the future.
Okay.
You know, we may, may or not, may not pursue that zoning, you know, a industrial-type zoning designation in the city with an annexation. It really depends on, you know, if sewer is available or not. You know, if sewer is available, then, you know, some other high-visibility use, you know, maybe it's a hospitality use, maybe this is a hotel site, maybe it's something else that is, you know, less intrusive to the neighbors than, than a manufacturing use would be. There's just a whole different range of, of considerations there. But until sewer is available, we're really left with some, you know, a small number of choices because of the health district's restrictions. And we think we can do that, remain in the county, cast off the CZDA, have the protections of the special notice permit, remain in the county until sewer becomes available, and then, and then we'll get out of your hair, and we'll go to the city.
And just, I'm sorry, I just have a few extra questions.
I told you I'd give you more to think about.
Yeah. What happens, and this is for staff, if the land is not annexed? How does that affect the county over, over the long term?
It creates all sorts of relationships with the city. For instance, the county sheriff shows up every time there's a criminal or similar issue for this property as opposed to city police. Or we have an IGA where the city agrees to have the city police there. And similarly, down the line, you know, services for an enclave of the county are always more difficult than all the rest of the county outside of these enclaves.
When it's in little potmarks.
Exactly.
Throughout the county. And I, I'm just curious, if there is the option to have a sunset provision in a CZDA, what do you think the likelihood of that could be? If, if we had that incorporated with some sort of a longer-term annexation agreement with the city? So that there would be some discussion of, hey, when sewer is available, we agree to be annexed. But in the interim, we have this CDZA with the county that allows us to do, operate the, the land within that set of accordance. So that way, it doesn't, we don't disincentivize the city from not wanting to annex it.
Yeah, I see your point. I hadn't thought through how you coordinate annexation with the sunset clause.
Because in, in essence, that, it, it sounds like there's a mutual agreement that we want to be annexed. But in this interim between today and whenever we can get sewer, we just want to have the option to be able to lease this land out and get something for it and not have to have this burden of going through special CZDA applications for prospective tenant, plus the notice.
Commissioner Retari, just, if you don't mind, I'd like to point out, as, as I think Pat Brayden had stated, there's no such thing as forced annexation. So even if the modified provisions of the zoning development agreement had a sunset clause to have the property be annexed, I don't know if we can force the, the applicant to annex into the city limits. It has to be on voluntary basis. And, and the last comment is, in cases, in cases where the board, in my experience with the county, in cases where the board sets specific sideboards or sunset clauses on future use, it becomes a, a huge liability for staff to bird dog or to oversee that document. And when it expires, to force the, you know, the applicant to do certain compliances. Otherwise, if they don't comply with the sideboards or the sunset clause, we, we have to bring them back to, for compliance review and go through this process again to either justify extending it or eliminating that document. So the sunset clause just creates more of a burden on staff to enforce it down the road.
No, I understand. And that's where I'm just curious about where, like, for example, with this other commercial property that's in the impact area for Post Falls, there is an agreement that we'll let you use this property under this set of circumstances. But when the city is ready to annex you, you have agreed to be annexed, right? Is, is, did I hear that correctly?
Yes.
And so my question is, is there an opportunity where we could have a similar-like agreement with the city so that when the condition is met, that the sewer is ready to be connected to it? And I'm not trying to compel the applicant as much as I'm just trying to find, if the applicant says, I want to be annexed, but it's not feasible within the next 10 years, then this kind of lays the groundwork for this, for, based upon these triggers, the primary one being that sewer is now available.
Commissioner Retari, so you're saying basically is you would like to consider staff and the applicant modify the zoning development agreement to remove a specific use that was approved in 2014 and allow a variety of commercial uses that are compatible with wastewater discharge limitations, which the applicant is seeking. But the only reason to keep the zoning development agreement is to have the sunset clause for the consideration of future annexation?
Yes.
Understood.
Mr. Tarbatten, did you have?
Yeah, I think I wanted to, maybe I had just one other thought. Mr. Wickman had stated that the city of Coeur d'Alene wasn't opposed to annexation even without services being able to extend to that property. So they could continue to use the property within the city under the guidelines of what Panhandle Health District regulations are. So they could still use septic system while annex, while the services are being brought to that location. In that situation, you would have no CZDA, at least to my understanding. You would work with the city in order to comply with their standards. And then at such time those services are available, then they can expand the use to what the city would allow from that point. And so in that sense, understanding that there may be some increase in taxes, but there isn't the issue with maintaining a CZD, CZDA that's awkward. You have the ability to open it up to different uses. So you can get a better quality tenant involved to hopefully offset some of that issue. That might be an option to consider as well.
A, a greater variety of tenants. The city zoning would allow more uses than ours.
Okay. So the possibility exists that you could get a higher-paying tenant with a broader use that would offset the expense of the, of the land? Okay.
Conceivable.
Okay.
All right. Then we'll hear from the owner. Mr. Condon, please.
Thank you. I'm John Condon, Hayden, Idaho. So, yeah, I think I'm just here to kind of give you a little background and, and basically explain to you what the vision is anyway. And I think Bruce, you did a great job of kind of verbalizing exactly what some of the thought process was. Give you a little background, you know, we operated a commercial operation on this site for close to 10 years. And we did so with recklessly not offending anybody, which is not easy to do in today's world. This idea has been brought up a couple of times now that, about the county being responsible for compatible uses. I would think and venture to say if we were incompatible, that that would have come up over the last 10 years. And also, when I stand on this site, I do realize there is some residential to the east of it, but that's been mitigated. We gave a, a hundred-feet buffer there to mitigate that. And even the way the structures were built was to mitigate that, where there's a back wall to that, to the east. Subsequently, there's also a large ravine to the east, which not only buffers the residential, but also is the main reason why it precludes us from hooking into the sewer to the east, along with the, the easement issues. When I stand on that site, I look, I look to the south there, and it's, of course, still zoned suburban, suburban ag, but I got 59,000 vehicles a day that travel back and forth in front of that property. I look to the west, and it's commercial. And across the highway, it's all commercial. At the end of the day, I honestly believe there's a higher and better use for that highly visible property than what is currently allowed under the current CZDA. I mean, I can, under the way it stands, I can store, you know, contractors' equipment, materials, and so forth in there and not have to go through a hearing like this. But I honestly believe there's a much higher and better use for that property than that. And we've actually invested the time, effort, and funds into, to making it more desirable for that purpose. I mean, there's so many different ways to address this. To me, mostly because I'm fairly simple-minded, is that the cleanest and easiest was just to go back, to ask for the commercial zoning so that we can actually be allowed to rent it to a tenant that has a higher and better use. And it's also been stated numerous times today that we're looking for a higher intensity. We're not actually, we've never proposed for a higher intensity. We're just proposed a higher and better use because we're already restricted to the intensity levels of where the concerns are as far as the aquifer and so forth by the Panhandle Health District and so forth. So honestly, you know, I'm not a professional in this field. I'm just a local businessman looking for a better use for a, a property that we own. And, and I think this is actually the, the way to do so. I mean, I think we are very good stewards of the land as well. And, and that's why I just come before you today, just to ask that, ask that, that we just be treated fairly. When I look at it, when I look at this, and I understand there's, maybe it's not as complicated as, as appears to the naked eye, but when I look to the west and I see commercial and I see three brand-new buildings being built, I guess you can complicate that, but that's not the way my mind works. I just see it, and I take it for what it is, what's in front of me, what's real. And that's it. I got three commercial buildings being built there. I got commercial across the way. I see the, throughout the county, that the majority of the properties along the freeways and highway systems are commercial and much higher, higher density and higher impact than what I'm proposing. When I look at that, I look at the zoning map, and I see that, that Interstate 90 in front of me is still, you know, at least showing on the maps, is suburban agriculture. I think, no wonder it doesn't appear to be compatible if that's what your thought process is. To me, once again, I judge it for what it is, and that's 59,000 vehicles a day right there. So to say it's not compatible, I think is not compatible to common sense, in my opinion. So with that, I appreciate your time today, and I'm open for any questions.
Okay, questions?
Yes, I have questions. Sorry, I, I don't know if I'm making things muddier or trying to find a clearer path here. But it, I, I want to start with staff if I could, because I, I want to just revisit. If the land were annexed, there would be greater use than what there is now. But there would be limitations based upon what Panhandle Health has put on the sewer discharge.
Actually, temporarily.
If it's annexed into the city, and it, then you would get sewer service from the city, and the Panhandle Health regulations would be irrelevant.
But not, but there's that transitory period between when it would...
Prior, prior to getting sewer services, yes, Panhandle Health retains jurisdiction and can regulate.
But it, but it would, it would free up the use of the property.
To some degree.
To some degree.
To some degree, which is no different than what we're asking for here, was we want additional use to some degree.
Yes, sir.
And so really, the, the deciding factor is, is the taxes.
Right now, and the expense of getting sewer to the property. Bearing in mind that, you know, the, the residential parcels next door are served by city sewer now. I don't, I don't know how feasible or expensive it would be to just extend it to the condon property.
But that doesn't sound like it's an option.
It doesn't sound like it's, it's a viable option right now, yeah.
Until Quatera is, is constructed, which, so there's this, this temporary zone, holding pattern between today and when sewer gets there. So...
Yeah, that is certainly an option to, that can be considered by the board.
Okay. So my, my question to Mr. Condon is, is if you could get the higher use by, through the annexation, is it the taxes that are what keep you from wanting to be annexed?
Not entirely, no. That is one part of three. Secondarily is that even though we've had discussions with the city, there's no guarantees until we get into it, until we actually apply and we get that. And until we do so, there's no guarantees whatsoever. And it wouldn't be the first time that I went before the county, the city, with certain understandings through verbal communication that didn't play out that way for one reason or another. And that's why, you know, when you've been on the other side of it, it can get kind of cumbersome and frustrating at times. Along with the fact that this step, to me, once again, and I'm not a professional in the field, but the easiest step, the simplest step, is just to go through the zoning from the CZDA to commercial. The rest is all certainly doable, but there's no guarantees there once you start down that path. In the meantime, I got a piece of property, and I have had numerous people with high interest over the last year. But the second you say, well, we got to submit this, and, and they've been familiar with the processes, none of which are timely, and none of which they have the time to wait out to see if maybe there. And that's why we're just asking to further define this and give us, you know, some reasonable expectation of what we can, who we can lease this to and what use we can have there so that we can move forward with it. But we're, once again, and, and I, I got to think that there is a method like you described. I'm not against at all at signing a contract to annex when it becomes available. But as it stands, it's million, it's, it would cost more than that property is worth to bring in sewer to that property. And the city says that, well, maybe, maybe, we could have some kind of agreement that would live for a late commerce or something. But then as they're, you know, as it reads is that if you aren't served by, by sewer, they are not going to give you a commercial. So you're, you're somewhere between this gray area. And to me, the cleanest path forward is the, is this path that we're, we're on right now.
Yeah, and my only concern is that I just want to avoid the county having a small pocket of land 20 years, 30 years into the future, that requires specialized services that only the county is going to have to be forced to provide, because the cities won't. And that happens in counties a lot, you hear about that, we actually have some of that right now, where there are certain places that if you call 911, oh, you have to have the sheriff show up to that, even though you're surrounded by city police. And so that is, just from a commissioner perspective, you want to try to avoid that. But I understand your situation, and that's why I'm kind of exploring, because you're in a difficult situation, and it seems so easy for the county to fix it, but we could be setting ourselves up because things change over time. And that's where, you know, the statement of, we want to be annexed when the time comes, to me is an inducement, so now how do we bind that? How do we lock that in in an agreement, to give you what you want, but for the county to get ultimately what it wants, which is land to be annexed into the city, so we don't have this tiny little pocket where we're compelled to provide services to, that are just not, you know, close by where we normally provide service, if that makes sense?
It does, it does, and I think, you know, to call it a pocket, to call it a spot zoning is a bit of a stretch, in my opinion, because, and it is, it does appear that way if you draw I-90 green, but if it's drawn red like it should be, then it's merely an extension of the commercial, you know, to the west, to the south, and it's really not any different than those adjoining properties as far as the zoning.
I agree with that, I'm referring to the county services that have to be provided.
Okay.
That's what I'm referring to, but I agree with you on that concept, you know, so. I don't know how we can try to explore figuring this out with the other jurisdictions, because I certainly understand, I mean, you don't want to start down the pathway with a verbal understanding, only for it to change later. I don't think that that's fair to ask that, but I just wonder, what could we do to help accomplish this goal and not burden staff?
I...
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's fine. Are you still the owner on the west side of Hutter?
We have that, a strip of property between us and Howard Root's property that's on the west side of Hutter, yeah.
Okay, because that one already has an agreement, and so if you're talking about county services, once that is annexed into Post Falls, which could be 10 years or never, then I'm wondering if legally we could tie in this property, so that way, when county services are no longer required on the west side, then they wouldn't be required on the east side either. So that's just one thing we could talk about. Right now, it sounds like, though, that possibly a public hearing might be in order. So I know that the mornings in March are canceled, there is a March 14 evening hearing, which this really doesn't rise to the level of evening hearing, but I'm not sure if the Condens want to wait until April.
We don't have enough time to do the notification.
For March 14?
For March 14, yeah.
Spring to April, all right, let me look. So it would be April 11? April 11. So, I mean, that works for me to have a public hearing April 11. I think we could still do it in the morning, just because of lack of public input, so...
I'm fine with that, you know, I'd like to find a way where we can, you know, accomplish all the goals of the competing interests here.
And, you know, I can give the board and staff time to possibly come up with a proposal or a couple alternatives to consider.
Is that something that can...
And the applicant.
It would give us, it would give us time, it would give me time to talk to my clients as well, to evaluate options from our side.
Okay. And you have to hit it, so it's green, it's green.
Just push the button. There you go.
I thought I was done talking.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, I understand, and maybe, is there an opportunity to communicate with the city and see if they might be interested in something like this, or is that something that you want to wait until you talk with your clients?
Well, Rand Wickman again, for the record. Commissioner, I've been in regular communication with the city, so it's just a continuation of those discussions, but I think we need to talk about what our options are on our side. I think there are options out there, you know, everything comes with advantages and disadvantages, and so that's not up for me to make those decisions, and so we need to talk through that. But if you schedule a hearing for April 11, I guarantee you, we will be ready to discuss that full range of issues.
Okay.
And we'll have gone through that with your staff, as well as the city of Coeur d'Alene.
Thank you.
So I guess that's, you know, where I was going with this as well. If we already have Panhandle is restricting the use, then that is, in my mind, the hugest restriction you have. So if we can get an agreement together where we know that that is the overreaching restriction, but yet we know as soon as either the west happens or sewer's available on the east, then that would be a trigger to say, okay, your CZDA is no longer suspended, it's now coming back into effect unless you annex. I don't know, I mean, that's just something that, you know, maybe a path we could do. And we do conservation easements, so I don't know why we couldn't compel the applicant to annex when some of these triggers fall into place, whether sewer's available on the east or Post Falls annexes the west.
Or from the north.
Yeah, sewer to the north.
Cortera.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it would essentially be the applicant agreeing not to contest, you know, annexation, once the city's, you know, once the city's ready to annex.
Right, but it is very disturbing to me that we would hold up a property owner from using their property in the manner they want to, because of what's going on around them. So, I mean, it's no fault of their own that Cortera's starting in the north, so if they started in the south, this might be a two-year conversation, I don't know. But, anyway, okay, so I think then we would need a motion, oh, well, let me ask, anybody else here wanting to testify in favor or against this application? Anybody on Zoom? Okay.
There's only staff on Zoom.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to remand this to public hearing?
Yeah, to, well, to schedule a public hearing on the day you...
April 11?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I move that we reschedule a public hearing for ZON 22-0006, Condon and Hutter, on, to April 11 at 10:00 a.m.
I second the motion.
Phil Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
All right, folks, we are not going to do deliberations, so 11:38, meeting adjourned. Thank you.